Yes, invite everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone might notice that we have a little bit of a shift in the agenda. I have moved public comment to the front of the agenda and reorganized a little bit some of the other items with the intent of bringing the areas where we had public engagement earlier in the meeting so there can be some consistency and people can know that if they want to come speak, that they can do that at the beginning of the meeting. So I will open it up for public comment. Just a quick reminder that public comment is intended for the public to let us know their feelings and opinions on matters that are the business of the board and we would not necessarily be responding to that comment tonight, but we will take that under advisement. And I ask everyone to limit their public comments to five minutes for sake of expediency. And when you come, please give your name and address and sign in so we have your correct name and address at the podium when you speak. So, do we have anyone here for public comment? Okay. Sure, sir. If you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Tom Farhill. I do not live in North Andover, but I'm one of the gas workers that is locked out of National Grid. And I'm here to ask for a moratorium on non-emergent construction work from National Grid Gas until our regular employees are back to inspect the work that they do. So that's basically it. I mean, I've been doing this job for 28 years and I know you don't have much of National Grid Gas here in North Andover. I understand most of it's Columbia, but there is still some. I don't know if they have any new projects in the works for North Andover, but we're just asking that you put a moratorium on it until we're back to work, if that's possible.
Can you give us more of the background?
Of myself?
Yes, I just...
It's just I'm one of the locked-out workers of National Grid on the gas side. So why we're doing this is obviously public safety because all of us, when the contractors are out doing the work that we sometimes do and sometimes we don't do, we do have our own inspectors there to make sure that they do follow the codes that we have to follow. So that's the reason why we're asking for this.
And this is primarily on the gas side?
Just the gas, yes.
And I don't think we have any projects on the gas side coming up at all.
We're just asking for that if it does come up, if that's possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I would note typically we would take public comment from North Andover citizens as a courtesy. Well, I heard your comment, but just for the public going forward. Any other public comment? Yes, please.
My name's Henry Wright. I live here in North Andover. Should I give a street name?
If you could, please, yes.
Oh, 70 Maple Avenue.
Great, thank you.
So I'm going to be an eighth grader at the North Andover Middle School and my friend Aiden couldn't be here to speak because he just, his mom was sick, so... But I would like to speak in support of changing Columbus Day into Indigenous People's Day because there are many reasons why we should do this, but here are several important ones. Columbus didn't even discover America. He landed in the Caribbean first. Columbus didn't discover America because there are already indigenous people here who are and were the rightful people to live in this land. And the only reason we have a Columbus Day is because the Italian-Americans wanted a special day for themselves, so the president said yes. Once Columbus landed, he didn't even treat the indigenous people with kindness or respect. In fact, he and his friends abused and murdered many of them, so there is no reason to celebrate that kind of behavior. And on a personal level, I'm a Korean-American. My Korean grandmother has told me about how the Japanese came into her town during World War I, or World War II, and kicked her family out of her house, imprisoned and separated her from her family when she was 16, and she never saw her family again. Just imagine if our community celebrated the actions of these Japanese invader every year. I don't think so. I truly believe if we changed the name of this holiday to Indigenous People's Day, it would demonstrate the people of our town and to our state that we are multicultural, open, and historically aware community that respects all people. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Henry.
Should I put my name and address here?
If you wouldn't mind.
Okay.
Thank you. You could actually take it to this table over here if you want.
This one?
Right, sorry, right there.
Madam Chair, Helen Picard, 447 Waverly Road. I'm on the agenda later. There are several other people who wish to speak. Would you like them to wait until then, or would you like them to speak now?
Can you just pause a new format?
Yes, please.
Consent item, which, I don't think your intention was an interaction then.
Right.
So the recommendation probably would be now?
Yes, okay. We'll take comments now in support of, assumedly everyone knows what you're presenting.
My intention was that I could frame the conversation and then others would speak, but it could go the other way.
Yeah, we can... Actually, I would like to do that with the agreement of the board since...
So ahead, take it on to consent.
Yes, well, I know Ms. Picard was going to make a proposal for our consent, so I'd be happy to hear comments related to that proposal under the consent item if that makes sense to folks since she's going to be presenting something.
I'm okay with that. It makes sense to do it that way.
Yeah, okay. So we'll do that.
I just don't want anybody to miss the opportunity.
That's fine. Yes, that's fine. So any other public comments not related to Ms. Picard's consent item? Okay. We will move on then. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. If everyone read the minutes from our June 18 meeting?
I did. And Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from June 18, 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No. All in favor, that motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is acceptance of donations. I have, normally we would have these under consent items, but I moved these to the forefront since they're typically very eagerly done and easily, easy items and oftentimes there's folks accompanying these requests. So first we have a donation from the Franklin School PTO in the amount of $1,000 to the youth center for summer equipment. Is there anyone from the Franklin PTO? I didn't see anyone, but just, okay.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we accept the donation from the Franklin PTO with our thank you in the amount of $1,000 to the youth center for summer equipment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The next is an item, a donation from Vivian De Lima in the amount of $300 to the police department for equipment or service. Is Vivian in the audience? No. Okay. Your motion?
Madam Chair, once again, I'll motion that we accept the donation from Vivian De Lima in the amount of $300 for the police department and with our thanks, to be followed by a letter of thank you for the donation.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, sorry, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Third item is from Elizabeth Wilson in the amount of $25 to the fire department for any needed equipment or service. Is Ms. Wilson in the audience? Yep.
I'd just like to note that she wrote, you know, you saw it's in our packet, just a wonderful little thank you note about her experience with the fire department, sort of what triggered this action. That was very kind of her, so really appreciate it right from the heart.
Wonderful, thank you.
So I move that the board of selectmen accept the donation of $25 from Elizabeth Wilson to be used for any need, service, or equipment of the fire department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And finally, a donation from Richard Yee of some framed black and white photographs that says here too, but I think I saw more come in the room, of local landscape photos.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just speak to this a little bit. Many of you might know Richard Yee, North Andover resident originally. He grew up in China. He's also owner of the China Blossom, but he is a world-renowned black and white photographer. And his works are, I have to read it, excuse me. His works have been held in exhibitions at the Addison Gallery of American Art, the Peabody Essex Museum, I believe there is a permanent display there, Mariner's Museum, the Seattle Art Museum, and many of his works are part of these museums' permanent collections. Mr. Yee's photographic works and his collection of photographs have great value artistically and socially. The donations enrich the photographic collections of the National Art Museum of China and offer more visitors and photography enthusiasts to opportunity to study and appreciate his beautiful works. So it is with great pleasure that I hope the board will accept. And I brought them in so, I don't know if the camera can get them for the people at home. They're absolutely stunning. He has a collection, a book where a lot of his photographs are from his country of origin, but these are of North Andover. And we hope to put them in our conference room on the other side of the building, but I would ask you to take a look at them. They just, they really do take your breath away and kind of just bring you into the moment. They're really beautiful. And I feel really lucky that he so generously, I mean, these, this artwork has, does have great monetary value, that he has donated to our town and his town. So I would move approval.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And of course, a letter of thanks. I asked him to come, but he is a little bit of a shy artist, but we're just thrilled to have him.
Great. Thank you to all of these folks for these donations. It's always wonderful and obviously very generous of them, and we appreciate those donations. Now we'll move into licensing.
Madam Chair, I'll motion that we move to licensing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Move into licensing.
Okay, so another first journey in. So first item on our agenda was a application or request for a livery license by John Nagoroji of Crossway Transit. And we'd like to, we'd like to table that there's some items that are, or there's an item that's missing from his application. And I think my recommendation with some counsel is that we should really only look at this, any of these sorts of applications, because it is for business, when it's full and complete. So when we have that remaining item in our hands, then we can take action at that point. So I'd like to table that if that's okay with the rest of us here.
Just a little clarity. You did receive the final document. It's 45 pages long and it arrived late in the day today.
Okay.
So we just need some time to make sure that we provide you the adequate counsel we need for it. So ask if we move on to the next agenda.
Okay, all right. I think that makes sense. I'd rather not.
So we don't really need to table it, then we just need to not take it up tonight. We'll take it up in the next.
Okay.
So we'll just add it to the next agenda.
Okay, okay. Well, next item on our list is the Merrimack College, as they do, is requesting a one-day wine and malt license for the Hockey Association Beer Garden on August 4th from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have their information in our packet, all complete, signed off by all the appropriate departments. I don't know if there's any comments or thoughts about that. Otherwise, I'll just take a motion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, our next is a request for butlers and bars, Deborah Ingles, for events at Smolak Farms. And the first one is a one-day all alcohol license for a party on July 27, 2018, from 5:00 to 10:00. A one-day beer and malt license for a party, surprise party. And knowing from my fellow selectmen, we won't say the name. I know, we've been down that road, so if everybody can a free hold, we'll be good with that. On July 29th from 3:00 to 9:00. And a one-day all alcohol license for a wedding on August 4th from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. And again, in our packet, we have everything signed off by the appropriate town departments. Are there any items of concern or discussion regarding these?
Madam Chair, I move that the board of selectmen approve these licenses as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Request for a change of management at Walgreens of Massachusetts, DBA Rite Aid. And whenever there's a change in management, we as a board need to be notified as they are the accountable party whenever there's alcohol sold there. So it comes to our attention. Are there any questions, or is there anybody that would speak to this from Walgreens?
I'm the manager at the store. So I went through the process, fingerprinting, all that. If you have any other questions, nothing is changing with our process with IDing, scanning IDs, using this register. Obviously, when the college is in session, extra precautions are taken as well. Any questions for me?
So are you Sarah?
Yes, I'm Sarah. Sorry, Sarah Ronaldo, store manager.
It's not just the when colleges in session.
No, we always ID, always, and we are, all of my cashiers go through trainings and everything with that. Definitely very serious explaining that is a different, from other stores, we obviously are one of the only ones in Massachusetts, so we take it extra serious.
Do they understand that out-of-state license is not an accepted form of ID? If you do take it?
Yep.
You do it at your own risk?
Yep.
And if the person is underage?
We are liable, yeah.
So it has to be Massachusetts, military ID, there's a few.
Yeah, we also have the scanner as well.
That helps a great deal.
Yeah, and then having a backup form if there's any further question.
Okay.
And sometimes if we're not sure, asking that extra question to catch them off-guard if there was any, you know, question further on it.
Good.
Thanks, Chair.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move approval for the change of manager at Walgreens, DBA Rite Aid.
Second.
Any more discussion? And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? And now our last item in licensing is the request of Suni Inc., DBA Town Mart, for a wine and malt package store license at 620 Winthrop Ave. Is there anybody here who will speak to that? Great.
I think it's 260.
260, thank you.
Is it just?
Sure. If you could just, again, introduce yourselves.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jill Mann. I'm legal counsel for Mr. Patel, Mitesh Patel, and Sunjay LLC, the entity that is applying for this license rank. This is a property that's located at 260 Winthrop Ave. It's that mobile station right before you go onto 295, just so you know, kind of for a point of reference. It's now a service repair station more, and they're actually, Mr. Patel has entered into an acquisition agreement with the current business owner to acquire and then renovate the space in order to provide for a convenience store versus a motor vehicle repair center. The particular property is still owned by global enterprises, so it's basically a parent of Mobile. So they have approved the license, or the request to come here to ask for a license, and they've approved the assignment of the lease from the current owner to Mr. Patel's company. Pursuant to the requirements of the liquor licensing laws, we've submitted to you a full package. Mr. Patel did come to the town, get the fingerprints, and we did submit the query, the personal information report, as well as all documentation related to how he is taking possession and control over the property. In addition to that, we did provide for you a site plan, just to show where the property would be, how the parking spaces are set up. In addition to that, the interior floor design, as you know, the ABCC particularly looks to see how that's going to happen, and then will be subject to a review and an inspection to confirm the location and how renovations are going at that particular property. Mr. Patel will be the license manager as well as the owner of the business. He will be on-site. He has experience with off-premises sales. This is not his first time, and he does hold a couple of other licenses. He's never been subject to any kind of disciplinary action and does run a very tight ship. We did just speak about it. He actually possesses a scanner. I know that a lot of businesses don't do that, but with the changes in all of the licensing, he has a scanner so that it identifies fraudulent licenses. And he uses that at his other enterprises and plans to use it at this particular enterprise as well. Anybody who will be working there with regard to any kind of contact with liquor will be, obviously, over the age of 18 and will be tip certified so that you know how to identify someone who's coming in who may be inebriated so that you don't sell to them, and then just to know how to properly handle all types of liquor sales. I don't know if you have any questions for Mr. Patel, but he is clearly here to answer them, or if you have questions for me, I'd be pleased to answer them for you.
Mr. Patel, where are your other businesses located?
I'm originally from Medford, and I have another liquor store in Malden.
In Malden?
I own Medford Liquor Store for more than nine years. I've been working in package stores off and on for almost 17 to 20 years. And both my stores, I, you know, take care of it personally. We take checking IDs legally, we take it very seriously. All my stores are equipped with license scan, so if we have fraudulent IDs or anything else, we can, you know, point it out. And nine years, we haven't had any problems, and I try, I'm gonna try to do the same here.
So in nine years, you've, because you're in a college town already?
Yes.
So you have not had any infractions?
No. I'm towards, more towards Malden side, so I'm pretty sure you're talking about Duffington and East City and all that.
Yes.
It's all the way towards Somerville and West Medford side.
Well, the Somerville is, I think we all know is quite a few young people.
Yes, yes. I am very aware of that.
Totally become the young people's center of Boston.
Yes. It's more towards West Medford side, Arlington border.
Okay.
But we are on towards Lawrence Avenue and towards Fells Way. It's almost bordering Malden.
Okay.
We do get, once in a while, we get students, but we are very vigilant. We always check IDs. We usually take only mess IDs. People have sometimes passports, we do that, but we do not take it lightly.
So what brought you to our community? How did you choose North Andover?
One of my cousins lives in Middleton. Mike, he's here to support me. And me and my kids, my wife, we always visit them at least once a week. We drive to Richardson's all the time. I'm pretty sure you guys are a fan of that. And I like the serenity of the neighborhoods. I'm in Medford, as you can see, it's hectic, it's fast. So I wanted to go and establish where I can have a little peace, I can have, sooner or later, if possible, I would like to move in towards the area myself. Right now, I live in Sagas. So that's, living in Medford, I have, I have lived the fast life, and I want to, as I get older, I'm in my mid-40s, I want to slow down a little. And North Andover, beautiful town, I had drove around many times, and this is something I wanted to do.
Okay. Well, that's great here. We like to have people come into our community. We think there's a lot to offer here.
Thank you.
We look at it as a two-way street, absolutely.
Are there any other boards that you guys need to go before zoning or planning or something like that?
No, we do not.
Being clear?
Yes.
Silly question. You may have even already answered it, but the entirety of that property is in North Andover?
Yes.
Yes.
So, and you might have said this at the beginning, and I'm sorry if you did. So the convenience store, you're leasing it from the Mobile?
So Mobile owns that entire property.
Entirely, yeah.
It leases out the whole thing. It does not sell, it's just a landlord. So it leases to Mr. Patel the right to occupy the premises, and then it actually enters into a franchise agreement to allow him to sell gas there through Mobile.
Okay.
So he's subject to those strict requirements of Mobile as well. So yes, he's actually, though, because it's a motor vehicle repair place, he has requested the ability to convert, abandon that use, and make it a convenience store. Right now, I think it's a tiny convenience store, it's a little bit or something, but it'll be a full convenience store and all of the stuff, you see with the overhead doors are gone.
I'm just curious, the convenience store, are you going with a franchise? You know, that a lot of them are, no, it will just be under your own, whatever name you choose.
Yes, yes.
I don't believe that Mobile will allow a franchise.
Probably wouldn't, but I'm thinking of the Blue Canoe and all those other kinds of things.
Oh, sure, sure. Nope, this is going, I mean, they call themselves, you know, Town Mart, but it simply is the name of a convenience store that Mr. Patel liked.
It will be our operation, it will be our responsibility, and there would be more towards gas, you know, the business, but convenience store part of it would be our operation.
Okay, good.
Andrew, on the certificate that was issued, page 33 of our handout, it's listing the address of 350 Winthrop Ave?
We actually came back in and got a new business certificate, and it was delivered over, but I think your packages were prepared and done by the clerk for the board. Yeah, that's why.
Yeah.
But it does now say, there's a lot of confusion, I don't know why it was between 350 and 260, because 350 is clearly the...
Plaza.
The Plaza.
Plaza, the Mac and Basket Plaza.
Yeah. We're not really sure where that came from even.
Okay.
Well, it's always exciting when a new person comes to town and opens a business, so thank you for picking North Andover.
Thank you, and we'll make you proud. And right now, if you have seen the location, it's a little bit a sore spot, and we are going to clean it up, make it look nice, and make it accessible to people, and it will be a beautiful place once it's done.
That's great. Well, it is a gateway, it's one of the gateways into our community, so much appreciated.
I have one final question, Mr. Patel. Is there any anticipation you're gonna sell used vehicles out of there?
No.
That was my question. It's gonna be primarily a mart and gas sales.
Yes.
No more repairs and no used car sales.
No.
Okay.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Great.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
One, finally, have you been given a list of our, North Andover's rules and regulations and our liquor policies?
She has it, and it was my first time, I was surprised when I was fingerprinted, but yes, I'm a little bit aware of that.
Any questions on that?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Ask your master. Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good luck. Thank you.
So I move to close the meeting of the North Andover licensing.
No, we'll do that.
Oh, I would ask for a motion. I didn't say that.
Motion to close the North Andover license.
Second.
Hey, hey, show a timer.
I've got plenty of agenda, it's sounding very good.
Okay, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Okay, so now we're back to consent items on our agenda. The first item is a request from Helen Picard that the board of selectmen proclaim North Andover recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the same day as Columbus Day, the second Monday in October. So I'll invite Ms. Picard to the podium to elaborate.
Helen Picard, 447 Waverly Road. I want to start by saying, though, I'm a member of the school committee in town, I'm addressing the board as a private citizen, to request that the board of selectmen proclaim North Andover recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the same day as Columbus Day, the second Monday in October annually. First, I want to thank the board for providing the opportunity for respectful civil discourse for its citizens. It's one of the many things that makes North Andover special. During the school building naming process, I learned a bit about the pre-European inhabitants of North Andover, the Penequik people. The land that became North Andover was obtained from the Penequik. The North Andover town seal, behind you, depicts a Native American in a canoe on Lake Kachikowik. I've begun to think of this as a portrait of a Penequik nan named Roger. When the town was incorporated as Andover by the General Court in 1646, Roger retained the liberty to fish and to cultivate four acres of land. Sadly, by 1676, 90% of the Penequik people in the Merrimack Valley had died from exposure to European diseases. I believe a proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day will honor the Penequik people and provide a more inclusive understanding of our town. A proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day also recognizes the indigenous ancestry and experiences of many of our town residents today. I believe it aligns with the town elected officials 2017 shared declaration of respect and our school department raised values, which grew out of the Building Respectful Communities movement. I believe it aligns with the Race Amity Day we celebrated in June. I believe words have power that impact actions and understanding for both adults and for children. I ask that you make this proclamation to shine a light on part of our story that often goes untold and move forward in celebrating and preserving the peoples and cultures as represented in our community and around the world. I have a written statement from a group of three clergy people who were not able to be here tonight, and I'll give copies of this letter to the board for their review. And Henry has a copy of his statement that he can also share with you. There are several others who wish to address the board, and I'm also happy to answer questions that the board may have, either now or after others speak.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Picard before I invite the public up for comment? Anyone else who came to make a statement? I invite you to step to the podium. State your name and address, please.
I am Kim Reardon, 62 Parker Street. And Helen already said a lot of what I was gonna say, but I guess I would say that this town has already acknowledged the significance of indigenous people. I mean, we need to look no further than the seal behind you. There's only one person in the picture, so. And so we've chosen that to symbolize our town. So I kind of feel like we're already, we've already acknowledged this. We have the name Lake Kachikowik. We have Wire Hill, which, in case anybody doesn't know, it's not wire like, you know, a thin piece of metal. It is a temporary woven fence that the Penequik used to catch fish before they reached Lake Kachikowik. So it's definitely part of the history of our town. I feel like this is an opportunity to jumpstart a conversation and delve deeper into the roots of our town. It's kind of like ancestry.com for North Andover, and as many of you know, people are showing much more interest in learning about their past. You know, a lot of us know our grandparents and maybe our great-grandparents, but we've found this curiosity in public to want to delve a little deeper and acknowledge and respect our roots. So I guess I would say, in the spirit of that, I would vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rosemarie Buxton. I'm from 119 Old Farm Road. My maiden name is Plourde. That's spelled P-L-O-U-R-D-E. It's a French-Canadian name, and I'm 100% French-Canadian ancestry. Both of my parents are descended from the same settler who married a McMac woman, and there are a number of indigenous and Matisse women in my background, speaking of ancestry.com. I have one uncle for whom Columbus Day is problematic. He prefers to celebrate Canadian Thanksgiving because of the way the Native Americans were treated, not just by Columbus, but also by the English. While Columbus has been traditionally celebrated as the explorer who discovered the New World, this discovery had significant costs to the native people who lived here, as Henry mentioned. Historian Darby McCullough describes the Spanish settlement of the American continent as one in which, quote, "good intentions clashed with naked greed and brutality, and settlement and Christianization was accompanied by unsavory and unprovoked feats of treachery, theft, and genocide." If we're to celebrate the discoverer of the New World, we should also be celebrating those who already inhabited it and maintained a culture of honoring and preserving our natural environment, the environment in which they lived. In an area like ours that already acknowledges the Native Americans with place names and symbols, we can also honor them by instituting Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Is anyone else here to make a comment? Okay, we can move to discussion or questions.
So this is dual, Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day? Or you're asking for it to be...
So we're asking at this point that you make a proclamation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. The North Andover Board of Selectmen did not name Columbus Day, and as long as our state or federal government is going to claim that, what's important to do is make sure that we teach correct history, not legend or myth. But what we're asking for you to do is something that you've done in your recent patch, which is to make a proclamation.
Helen, thank you, because I know that you've been working diligently to solicit feedback from...
I've been learning a great deal as I've gone along.
You know what? And I was on the same committee that talked about the Penequiks, and I remember thinking that that was an interesting history that I had never really reflected on before when it came to North Andover. When we declared or proclaimed Race Amity Day, there was a whole program that a third party put together to help bring attention to it, and the Board of Selectmen was simply just one link in that chain. If the board proclaimed Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, is, what's the goal from there that will happen? Because we can declare it, but I assume that there's a curriculum or efforts that would be pushed either by the Historical Society perhaps, or the school department. Is there something that will go hand in glove, or will it just be...
So there's a lot of ways to approach things. One is to create an event by which we then need a name for, but we already have a history that we want to celebrate, and by bringing this name forward, it will make us ask questions. It will engage our curiosity, I should hope, so that we can learn more about our own history. And I think that when it ends up on calendars, I will be very excited if it ends up on the school committee calendar, and families look at that calendar, they'll say like, what's up with that? And our schools will respond. Our state adopted new social studies standards in January of this year that addresses indigenous peoples in the Americas as well as all over the world. It addresses it at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level. So by making this proclamation, we can really claim that, and we can talk about how our curriculum is aligned with that, if we're talking about the schools. But most of the people in this room did not learn a lot about indigenous peoples in their school experience, or, you know, many of our truths. And even just sitting here tonight and listening to Kim Reardon, I learned something new about our town and the words that are used. So it changes the way we talk with one another. It's not about one, you know, festivity. It's really about thinking about how we think and talk about our heritage.
Any other questions for Ms. Picard? Okay.
I, the other Rosemary in the room, I, on my mother's side, have quite a bit of Native American heritage. I also taught school in the Navajo Reservation, lived right on the reservation in the boarding schools with the kids, so I have a keen interest in this. The only thing, as Selectman Collegeiro said, I don't want one to cancel all the other. I would prefer that they're both celebrated together.
I mean, the item on our agenda is to recognize that, recognize the same day that we celebrate Columbus Day also as Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Right.
So there wasn't a proposal to change the name, just to add to it that we have Columbus Day, and on that same day, we would call it also Indigenous.
Use it to celebrate, not celebrate, but to acknowledge and educate our entire history, you know, that it wasn't all the, as someone recently said to me when they saw this on the agenda, all they learn about is the Nina, the Pinta, and the Santa Maria, and there's so much more that goes along with that history, and it's not all good, and there was a real impact that was had, so let's use the opportunity to educate the public about the whole piece. I just realized after our conversation, we never really, it was never articulated, once we do this, and I'm gonna go back to Caitlin Parker, Caitlin Parks, who did the Race Amity Day project, where she took this idea, asked for our proclamation, but then built a whole program around it. And so I would just, I would hope that, here we are in the middle of July, I can imagine people have short memories and may not recall that by the time Columbus Day actually comes around, and so if it were to be proclaimed, I hope people use that as the opportunity to try to educate again about the whole history, including our local history.
I myself have been mentioning this in many places since the 80s. The first Indigenous Peoples' Day intention arose out of an international meeting of indigenous peoples in 1977 in South America, when we were coming up to the 500th anniversary of the first world-changing encounter of Europeans and indigenous peoples in the Americas. We're coming up now to the 400th anniversary of the Mayflower, which is the first area-changing experience of European settlers in interacting with indigenous peoples. So there are many opportunities that are forthcoming for us to think about that, and of course, there's an annual opportunity for us to speak about it. I did notice our poet Laureate came in, and I think he might have a poem. He has no poem. I just didn't want to ever miss a chance for a poem in a public meeting.
Okay, if there's no more questions for Ms. Picard, I would entertain a motion, and then we can have further discussion after the motion, I guess, between ourselves, if that's warranted.
I'll make a motion that we proclaim the second Monday of October Indigenous Peoples' Day in North Andover.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I was just gonna also suggest, within that motion, is that, and I was looking at our calendar to find out when our meeting closest to Columbus Day is that at that meeting prior to Columbus Day that we actually have the written proclamation, and we read that proclamation on our meeting prior to that day. I think it's a great idea. I would very, very support it. Thank you.
That's a good idea. Let me look at what...
I keep my second.
Okay.
Do we have a meeting on the first?
No, September 25th.
Oh, okay, so...
September 25th.
October 9th is probably the day after.
Yeah, October 9th is the day after, so. Okay, so September 25th. I amend your motion to include the proclamation to be read on the 25th. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, or any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Oh, no, no, no discussion. Sorry.
Thank you to everyone who came out and expressed an interest.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Picard, for bringing that forward, and to those who joined.
We can contact the Historical Society next and make sure they have a robust program planned.
We only knew somebody.
Okay, so... Oh, thank you, yes. The next item on our agenda is a waiver of building permit fee for renovations at the Kittredge School. Obviously, we always do this when we are building a project for ourselves. We don't need to pay ourselves the building permit fees.
So, Madam Chair, can I ask, I mean, is there, now, I only have a shorter tenure than some of my peers here, but have we ever had an instance where we haven't waived the fee when it's our own internal...
I don't think we have, but I think, you know, by doing it, and we've had a discussion that I think it's...
Keeps us honest?
Keeps us visible. Keeps us transparent on what's going on, and also gives some, you know, some information about what's being done in town. So, you know, we're a public board, and we're televised, so I think it's, you know, it takes a minute, and you're right, we don't ever, we don't ever, you know, why would we, right? Because we're just paying ourselves, but I think it's a good way of keeping the public informed of what's going on and, you know, what's being built in town.
I just appreciate having the discussion, you know, seeing as we've go down this road quite frequently.
Okay, so I have a motion to waive the fee.
Move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is something that I actually put on the agenda, which is to authorize the town manager to approve these requests, rather than us voting on them each time. So obviously, we just had some discussion, and I was assuming we would have more discussion on that point after I read this item, because I feel like we always just approve them, and why would we, why would we ever pay ourselves for a project? So I thought this was something we didn't necessarily need to bring to ourselves for a vote, as well as, well, let me just finish reading, and then, as well as waiving the right of first refusal on affordable housing units. So every time we have an affordable housing unit come up, we waive our right of first refu, or, yeah, waive our right of first refusal for purchasing that unit, because we don't want to be in the real estate business. So rather than bringing these up every meeting, I was suggesting we could give that authority to our town manager.
Can I just put that in context?
Yes, please.
In both of those cases, I would never do that without providing you information about what steps we've taken. So Mr. Valencourt's point about the building permit fees, if we were to proceed and vote this in the affirmative, we would make the board aware of it as part of either whatever format you wanted, either including on the next agenda and say under the town manager's report. We did this as part of your news and announcements you get every day from Miss Berzlaaf included in with that as well. So although I certainly appreciate the effort to want to expedite things, I certainly would be prepared to provide you whatever information you'd want so that the public was aware, in both cases.
Can you, so the chairwoman had, I assume, spoken to other members. I know that you were really thoughtful with speaking with me, and I didn't know as much about the affordable housing units and the process that we go through, and we almost always, in fact, have always, at least while I've been on the board, have waived our right. What's the background of that, Mo? Is that built into their...
I might be able to speak to that because I was on the zoning board. When we go through a 40-yard, when we go through the comprehensive 40-yard process, part of that is, part of that process within the covenants of that unit, of that development, it's written in that the Board of Selectmen have right of first refusal for any units that come up for sale. If so, if a person purchases an affordable unit and then decides to sell it based on the covenants within that development, that has to go to the Board of Selectmen first to see if we want to purchase it to add to our affordable housing stock.
And so it's not, so that, my question about it is, is it, if it's written in that the Board of Selectmen have to vote on it, then is that a key piece of the transaction where they have to have on record that we...
It's a deed restriction. So it's required, if they decide to sell the property, it's a requirement.
They have on record that we have chosen not to purchase it?
Yes. The board can delegate, as it has in the past, can delegate various authority. You've done that under the zoning bylaw and banners. You've done it on gas permits. So it's up to the board, quite frankly. You can delegate, pick and choose which authority to delegate. So under, if there's a deed restriction typically, it can be under a 40B, but again, most of our 40Bs are rentals, so they wouldn't necessarily apply. But it might have been a condition through the Affordable Housing Trust as, for instance, downpayer assistance. Down payment assistance, which is commonly what these are coming through on Maplewood Reserve, so there would have been funding for downpayer assistance for this particular buyer. There would have been a deed restriction around affordability, and built into the deed restriction is that the town has the first right of refusal before the property is sold.
If we were to want to buy a property, it would be done through the Affordable Housing Trust, and they would still have the opportunity to try and to purchase this house. Like, when we waive our right of first refusal, we're not saying that the Affordable Housing Trust isn't going to buy it. We're saying that otherwise, the town isn't going to buy it, right? So that was some research, I guess, I did before I brought this up, was we're not passing on Affordable Housing Trusts being able to buy the house, right?
No, wait. So the specific nature of these, and there's always been this, is that they're up for sale, we provided some kind of financial assistance, the board has the right to exercise the first, right of first refusal. The reason the board hasn't exercised that right of first refusal is it would force you then to buy the unit, which has all kinds of complications to it. Do you really want to buy the unit? Is that the purpose of what you're trying to accomplish? Even with trying to keep the units affordable, there's still obligations under the deed restriction that the unit be marketed as affordable for a period of time, even if the town doesn't purchase it. It would afford the right for the Affordable Housing Trust or others to buy it at an affordable level. If it passes that time period, how long's that? 120?
180 days.
180 days, it still has to be marketed as it's affordable. This is simply that the town doesn't stop and find a way to purchase it, which for us would require a town meeting, because we don't have an appropriation. So if you exercise the right to do that, for instance, on these condominiums, you'd have... So if you exercise the right to do that, for instance, on these condominiums, you'd have to stop, usually 150 or more, they're increasing in value, but somewhere in that range, then you'd have to call a special town meeting and fund it. So again, as it relates to these that have come before the board for the last seven years, it's just not practical that you would do it. The philosophy also has been that these individual units aren't altering the game in terms of affordable housing inventory. They're one unit at a time, and there's still a strong likelihood they will remain affordable because another affordable buyer would step in, or if it was a really good deal, the Affordable Housing Trust. Generally speaking, the Affordable Housing Trust hasn't pushed to buy these either, because it'd rather use their dollars to generate more affordable units. So on a cost-per-unit perspective, it's not an ideal solution, generally speaking.
So, I mean, I was proposing this because I guess my overall objective was, are there items that every time they're on our agenda, we say, yes, we always waive the fee, we always waive the right? And can we streamline our agenda and make more time for more meaningful policy discussion on topics where, that we might not otherwise get to, because we're spending time on these other kinds of things? And granted, it's only two items, and they're not usually long, so we can take that into account, but that was my driving rationale behind putting this out here, so.
Well, so let me ask, no, and I appreciate, I think it's, you know, these are the sort of things, you know, why do we do what we do? And I think it's good for the community to hear that, too. So I appreciate that. The one question I have, and maybe you can answer this for us, is there any scenario you could see where that, I understand that these are, right now, we're talking about condominiums, but where there would be a piece of property that would have a larger value to us as the town, that could come kind of through this pipeline? That would be the only...
Not this pipeline. So you have a right of first refusal under a number of different statutory references, for instance, open space. If someone's getting, if someone is getting a reduced tax bill because they're preserving the open space for farmland, as an example. This doesn't relate to that at all. That would be a bigger decision that the board would weigh into. I assume what the chairman is speaking about is specific to the rights of first refusal on affordable housing units that were subsidized by the town at the time of purchase. That's specifically what we're talking about. Doesn't, so there isn't sort of a trap here where a property comes forward that's a million dollars and represents 20 units? That's not, these are individual condominium units that were subsidized in some fashion. Sometimes it's simple with down payer assistance, down payment assistance, and not actually subsidizing the purchase.
If it's a defined group, like, defined in that way, I don't see that, I don't see that there's a risk to that in terms of transparency, a little on the process, but I don't know how, how do my peers feel?
Maybe we can just go around and say a general...
Sure. I think, you know, the affordable housing units, that is one that we very rarely even discuss. I think, I mean, I would be okay with that one. I think I'd like to keep the building permits, because I think it informs people of what's going on, and also, you know, we, you know, maintains that transparency that the development's happening. So that would be my opinion.
Phil?
I mean, it certainly is helpful to know what's going on, and I'm trying to think of what's... My question for the town manager would be, are there instances where, because of the process we have in place, have we ever held up people from being able to sell property because of, like, for instance, over the summer, even though we meet more frequently during the rest of the year, over the summer, we meet once a month? So has there ever been an instance where we're holding up the sale of property?
It shouldn't be, because they have to have 180 days.
Well, they need, they need this vote first, but it has very little impact, in fairness.
Okay. Then otherwise, frankly, I'm ambivalent. I don't think that we spend much time either way on it at meetings, and I think that, you know, for the sake of efficiency, I mean, I don't think the town, well, the town manager's accountable to us no matter what, so we certainly give you enough authority otherwise. You not selling properties in North Andover isn't exactly going to...
Not buying.
Yes, exactly, not buying properties that are for sale in North, you know, excuse me. But I do appreciate the fee comment.
Rosemary?
I have the same position that Selectman Valencourt said. I think it's good for transparency and letting the public know, particularly on the building permit fees, and just to make sure that, you know, if it's out in the open, there's no giving other people's passes, that it just sort of expands on its own. Not that I'm saying that the town manager would do that, I just, it's quick. And I guess I feel the same way about the affordable housing. I think it's also just a reminder, you know, of what we're dealing with with affordable housing. It's a very quick issue, and I think that we should keep it on the, both of those on the agenda. I appreciate your changes. I very much like the one for public comment at the beginning. We used to do that years ago, and I like some of the things that you're doing already. Just on these two particular things, I would prefer that they remain the same.
That's fine, it's worth the discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
Final thoughts, Chris?
All I'd say is, I think there can be transparency in terms of notice, how we've put it out with the agenda. So I think that's possible, that, as you say, in the town manager's comments and so forth. So I do see, there could be a vehicle to kind of satisfy that in terms of the waiving of the fees and so forth. And again, it's very defined as to what it is. We give you authority to negotiate some pretty large contracts, so I, but I do get the spirit in something I think we've all tried in this board to do, which is the transparency, have people understand the process, so appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, my final thought is that I completely, I've talked about transparency since I've been on the board, so I completely understand the points you guys are making. I guess my feeling was that we can be transparent in other ways on these items, and, you know, have it communicated other ways, but I appreciate anyway the comments, and certainly see your positions. So do we have any motion on any portion of this, or are we going to pass on?
I move that they remain on the agenda for the board of selectmen to make the decision.
I'll second that for comment reasons. No, I think, as I said, I definitely, I think, keeping the waiver and the building permits is on there, I also understand the transparency, and I think the comments about the amount of time that it takes to go through these items is relevant, too. I mean, really, I think these are, you know, I don't think these items are the ones that are dragging the meetings down. And quite frankly, I don't think our meetings drag at all. I think they're exciting, and they're friendly and fun.
Right, they are.
I don't think, I don't think our meetings are long at all.
I'm not saying they were going to be a meeting. I would simply say, you know, I was looking for ways to...
I know, I understand, no, absolutely, and I agree with, with Rosemary, I think, you know, I like the changes. I think moving the donations up is very respectful of those folks who are giving donations, so they don't have to sit through other items that sometimes take longer than, than, you know, they need to sit through. So I think that's great. I think some of the changes in that has been great, and as well as the public comment being up front. So, yeah, I'm good with those changes, and I think those alone will make the meeting more efficient. So I think, you know, the changes are good, and I think maybe we take them one step at a time, you know, and then...
Well, the one thing that I was thinking, too, the affordable, as you were speaking, it occurred to me, it's also a way of the public to know that there are affordable housing available, and then it could pique interest for people to...
To go out and look at them.
Yeah, exactly, and I think that's very important as well.
Any final comments? We've kind of already did the roundtable. I didn't do it at the right timing, I guess.
No, I think it's, again, you can't have, we can't have these discussions without having it on the agenda and having the discussion here, so, and I think a good point was made that you've reshuffled, or you've shuffled the agenda in such a way that it goes more efficiently already. I mean, I see both points of view, and I'm fine with keeping them as is, because they certainly are not. If a meeting does drag on, it's not because of these. I would bet we probably spent more time this evening than we have in my three years as a selectman on these...
Yeah, right, so I did the opposite of what I was...
All of them together.
And I say that with respect, I don't begrudge that, because we have to have these discussions, and it's good. Sometimes you do things a certain way so long that you forget why you do them, and you don't ever take a step back, and that's why I think we have a good policy of rotating our chairmanship and looking at it, looking at the agenda, so.
Exciting way to move.
Okay, final thoughts, anyone else? Okay, so all those in favor of retaining our authority on these then and not authorizing the town manager?
Aye.
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 Can I make one comment for, now that we're past that? Just specifically to the building permit, because this is something the board presented, and from my perspective, I take the direction from the board. So, but as it relates specifically to the building permits, one thing I would like to do, not that I have taken on this responsibility, I would like to gather that information as much in advance as possible. So what's happening is a practical matter, is we get in the middle of these projects. And remember, this isn't just the senior center we're building, the middle school fields, the ECC, and all the list of wonderful things we talk about. This is pulling plumbing permits and electrical permits. And so there is a logistical component to this that I would suggest, but again, I didn't want to influence this discussion, sort of use a dollar cutoff, because the board should retain whatever it wants to retain. I would say that I certainly have a strong opinion and desire that we provide you sort of a list of projects we will be doing, as opposed to what happens today is the projects on the doorstep. And like a homeowner who sits there and says, I need a building permit, the difference is the homeowner goes to the building inspector, and in two or three days, the building permit's issued. For the municipalities, it goes to the building inspector, they come to our office, and in turn, you're not meeting for two weeks. And if the homeowner waited two weeks, folks may get some calls. So we would like, what I'd like to see happen, is us be able to provide you three, four, five, or six months' worth of funded projects, and say, these projects are coming down the pipeline, here's the likely value, and have you in advance pre-approved those, so that we're not also waiting for permits? How's that sound?
I think that sounds great.
You're okay with that? I don't, we don't need to vote on that, but so you may see a list from us of anywhere between three and six months' worth of projects, because again, we spend $30 million a year in various items, list those with values, and ask you to take them up all at once so that we can become more efficient as we hit the road with some of these projects. Is there any opposition or issue with that?
Nope, I think it's a great idea.
We've accomplished, I think, kind of what you were aiming for.
No, we take one vote rather than a vote every time?
Yeah.
Great, okay, good.
Okay, moving on. We have next on our agenda a vote on whether to participate in the national opioid litigation. So I think everyone has that. This is a request from a group of private lawyers who have come together to, I guess, try and sue pharmaceutical companies on behalf of Massachusetts municipalities.
Madam Chair, could you give me one courtesy?
Yes.
So because of the timing of the appointment of the Potham Executive Assistant, she was in the office today, and I asked her to come because it'd be a month before you got to meet her, and I just, I probably mis-promised that I would get her earlier on in the agenda, and she's kindly sitting in the back over there, and I would...
You're already making me go out of order on the first meeting.
I was trying to hold on, but now we're in with an opiate discussion in front of us, I think, I think so. I'd like to introduce Jillian Brothers, who will begin on Wednesday. I'm very excited to have Jillian on board to support and work with the board and Laurie and I, so with that, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And as I mentioned, my name is Jillian Brothers. Thank you for the opportunity to have me tonight, so that I can introduce myself. Looking forward to working with everybody and joining Laurie and the team, and it's really what it came to say today, so.
Very good, thank you. Welcome.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for your patience.
So you'll be 10 to 15 hours a week, is what the plan is?
Yes, yes, that's what they say, so whatever you need me, I'm here. Great.
Hope everyone can get some time to meet you personally.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
No problem, thank you. So, so back to the national opioid litigation. So the request is from this group of private attorneys to join us in their pursuit of trying to receive damages from pharmaceutical companies as repayment for whatever costs we are incurring from the opioid epidemic that, you know, they're, they are ultimately, I guess, responsible for. I think you also received from information from our town attorney on the fact that the state is, the attorney general is also already taking this similar action on behalf of the municipalities, so I don't know if there's any further, I don't think Suzanne didn't come to add any details. Everyone read that, I assume?
For what it's worth, I mean, a number of these attorneys, we may recognize their names because they've done work for the town of North Andover. One is actually even a North Andover resident, Mark Rich, from, so, still a bit of background information on the half dozen attorneys that are filing this, and just pointing out the personal connection to our own community.
Should we hear a motion, and then we can discuss?
Sure. Madam Chair, I'll let you want to make a motion. You know, you, this was...
No, go for it.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. Let me just read it, make sure I read it correctly, as it's written. Move that the board of selectmen participate in the national opioid litigation.
Second.
Just give a second.
So now I guess this is the time for discussion, technically, right? Do we have, do we want to go around and have comments? Rosemary, do you?
Well, it's interesting, I actually talked to the town manager about this back in January, late January. Actually, one of the attorneys on the list had talked to me about it, and I talked to him and said, you know, we should, you know, at least learn about it, so I'm kind of pleased that it's here. I just, I just have a couple of questions, so, you know, let the group go along and...
Is there someone here from the attorneys to answer questions? I guess I should have asked that in the first place.
There's some people in the room who look like attorneys.
I mean, what is, do you want to say what your concerns would be, and then we'll go around?
Well, maybe Mr. Manager could answer the question. So I guess the money goes to compensate for what it costs us to address these programs that was just said? Somebody just said it, was it you, Phil? Who said it?
I said it. I mean, from my reading, it seemed that they were...
Oh, okay. Yeah, because I was, so my thought, too, maybe even more than compensate, is for education and training, and for staff that deals with this type of issue on a regular basis, more than, I guess it's, some could argue, well, that's one and the same thing, but I think the education piece of it is hugely important.
I would expect, so at this point, there can be no assumption of how the proceeds could be used?
True.
So if it's, if it becomes a settlement, legal settlement, then the question then would be, does the settlement itself prescribe how the dollars are going to be used? And then with that, I would expect eventually, if there's a settlement in this case, either through the AG or through this particular group, that the Department of Revenue will weigh in on how this has to be used.
Okay, makes sense.
So is it treated like grant funds? Does it end up in what we call a special revenue fund versus a general fund? Does it have to be used for programs? It likely will need further appropriation. Almost every dollar we receive requires further appropriation, in our case, through town meeting. So I would say that although you may have a, an interest as to where the funds would go, I think at this point, that'd be only speculative. It would be a function of how the Department of Revenue interprets how cities and towns should receive and use the funds.
Thank you, that's sort of where I was thinking, is it already been directed in one direction or another, or, okay?
No.
I guess my question would be, so I would assume that we would need to provide an accounting for the amount of money or the expenditures that, I mean, I think the way that I read it, it's a reimbursement for expenditures that we've had to fight the opioid crisis. So if we've hired a counselor to help counsel people in crisis, if we've spent money on education already, whatever we've done, so we would have to come up with some kind of an accounting, I would think, of the expenditures that we've had, so that we can then request that as a reimbursement? Or will there be just be some settlement pool that every, every participant in litigation would have access to a percentage of?
It's in essence a class action lawsuit on a contingent fee basis, so there's going to be a methodology for calculating how each community is compensated. Part of the argument I assume the legal team will make is, here is the aggregate cost of all of the communities that are participating in the class action, and they're going to see court fees or court costs associated with that, damages in their fees, and it'll come back to the communities in the same way as it sort of goes in as part of a calculation. So I would assume that if the board votes to depart into the action, we'll be asked how much the cost is, and that is a function of that, if it proceeds through, and ultimately it's adjudicated, and it's decided that there's a settlement on that, the dollars will come back, consistent with what our calculation has been to the cost to this point. But again, I think some determination of whether or not we could use them for those purposes is a completely different conversation that will be the result of the Department of Revenue's interpretation of how those funds can be used.
So our town council said that, provided us some insight as to what the Massachusetts Attorney General is doing. If we are party to this, does this in any way like preclude us from what the Attorney General is doing on behalf of the state?
Yeah, that's a good question. Well, you know, I think that's a, it's too early in the game, but my assumption is that if dollars are identified as a function of a cost based on Mr. Valancourt's point and there's a second legal action and there's, there's dollars, damages paid by Big Pharma for similar cost, it would not make sense to me that the town could collect a second time on the same dollars. But I don't know how it'll be sorted out by the court. I think that's speculative at this point.
The concern is that it would cancel each other out.
Yeah, I don't think it would be that necessarily. I think that just the expectation that you say there was a, another law firm decides to participate in this and we, we go with that group as well, then it's not as if we're increasing our odds for a greater sum of money. I think at some point, there'll be a decision made as to how to proceed in this. There'll be damages and there'd be, I'm sure, some challenge if there are damages awarded as to whether or not each of the participants could collect on multiple occasions. I think there'd be a question about that. That might be another court case.
I almost wish there was a vehicle where they, I mean, a lot of this problem was is they were telling everybody, "Oh, it's fine. It's not addictive." And it was really addictive. It's almost, for the good of humanity and good of those who are suffering pain, it's almost like we want you to put those dollars into finding something else to replace this that isn't addictive. But I don't get, I'm, I'm not the one who gets to make those decisions, but I think that would be a worthy way to direct those funds. But I mean, it's as simple as kids having wisdom teeth out and they're given these high prescription drugs with quite a few, and they get into trouble. I mean, as simple as that, somebody with back injury.
I think in a way, the difficult challenge for the Board is the, the sort of societal piece of this is not complicated. Well, but the practical piece may be. In other words, there's pharmaceutical companies producing the drugs, there are people prescribing the drugs. And so from a legal perspective, at least the Board must consider, if tomorrow's lawsuit is against those who are prescribing the drugs, does the Board feel any different about your participation in a lawsuit? Because I wouldn't be surprised that if this looks like it's heading down that path, that there might be other lawsuits, that this one happens to be against the sort of unidentifiable corporate entity, but the next may be folks closer to home. And I, I wouldn't be surprised if this expands, just like this ZAG and 100-plus communities, that there'd be, there's going to be another path in which some group of attorneys will pursue. It doesn't, I'm not directing you as to where you should go on this, but I think it's, this may not be the last time you talk about this issue. And so to a certain extent, your, your question is, do we want to get into this particular suit? And does that in any way lead us down a path as it relates to future suits about other folks who are involved in the process?
I think that we're going to have this conversation, not literally about this particular lawsuit, but I imagine we'll continue to have this conversation for probably years. And I think that, you know, we're a little north Andover and there were so few opportunities to be able to hold such large groups like this accountable. If we could lend our voice to a substantial list of other Massachusetts communities that are also trying to hold Big Pharma accountable for the role they played and continue to play, if there are no repercussions beyond us just now having to discuss it again more in the future in different contexts, I don't, I don't see a problem with that.
So I could see--
I think you made a good point though. I mean, the prescribers, the doctors, they're told that this is safe and then they prescribe it and now they're being held responsible. And I would hope that even those in the pharmaceutical industry really did believe it was safe. I hope that. I know that's being a Pollyanna, but at some point, we do need drugs to help people who are suffering, you know, terrible pain. And sometimes it's long-term, could be for the rest of their life. So I just, there's this balance between punishing them so much that they don't have the resources to research other types of drugs that could really help people or the doctors who are trying their best to make people comfortable. It is complicated.
Or on the flip side of that, it's putting pressure on them to research other medications.
It is, but you don't want them--
And to let other doctors, doctors who are prescribing these opioids without, you know, I'm not going to say they're all not doing it with the best interest, but some of them, you know, they're just cutting these prescriptions like they're nothing, just to get people off their, off their dockets, you know? So it's, it's holding the pharmaceuticals accountable and I think eventually, it's going to be to hold others accountable as well for this addiction that we have.
But I think we all know that to bring drugs to market takes a tremendous amount of money and research in years.
We just had a whole year-long discussion about it.
Yeah. So it is, it's just so complicated. And I think the town manager did bring up a point is, how will we feel if we're now punishing the doctors who already have high, you know, insurance and everything else? It is very complicated. And you mentioned that to me when I first brought it to your attention and I remember your, your response was, "We're sure we really want to do this and we've had plenty of time to think about it."
I would paraphrase that as saying that there are a lot of tentacles to the discussion.
Yeah. You didn't say that, but I understand your point.
So, so, I mean, I think that we can all have a very good and heartfelt discussion about all the ethical and moral and personal impacts here, but it seems to me that the question in front of us is a very practical business calculation, quite frankly, which is, do we get aboard this boat because we think it'll get us to a destination that'll help this town? Or do we wait for another boat? Or do we think we can get on several other boats to get us the same destination? However, that is--
And do we think this is the right process? I mean, I brought in the opening statement, I mentioned, I specifically said this is private attorneys bringing this because is the right, do we think the right process is for the state to, the Attorney General to bring the case on behalf of all the municipalities in Massachusetts? Or do we think if it should be a private organization, private legal firms going after this, should we go seek one? Or are we just, I mean, we're being solicited, I guess. So the question is, is that the right process for, for us to be solicited?
I think, not being an attorney, but I think when you have a class action suit, you're building strength by getting additional plaintiffs within the suit. And that's, you know, obviously what they're trying to do is, is to build that, that strength of numbers by building the class action suit. And that provides them with more legal muscle to, to, to fight these big pharmaceuticals, let's face it, these pharmaceuticals, as Rosemary said, they have a lot of money. It takes a lot of money to get these drugs to market and they also have a lot of money to defend themselves against lawsuits. So these, you know, I think when you get a class action suit like this, you get more legal muscle behind there to, you know, represent and battle these--
So quasi-rhetorical question. Do you think that this particular, because again, it's picking, doesn't sound like the Board is challenged by the idea of pursuing this. The question is how, right? Do you think the AG, the Attorney General of Massachusetts or the attorneys presented here provide the best, if you were given a choice, just quasi-rhetorical question, if you're given a choice, certainly a hypothetical question, between the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts, of which there is no fee, contingent or otherwise, and the attorneys presented with this proposal in front of you, it doesn't, it may or may not affect the net effect to you in the sense that if the Attorney General's class action as well, I'm just, so I'm playing out sort of the business sort of practical plan here. Which, which path would you take?
Well, you look at this and say, well, I mean, they're saying 25% is their contingency fee and 10% for a cost on top of it. So rarely have I seen anybody on an expense account go less than what--
I think one-third of the total.
So figure one-third of the total. So that, that just, again, stepping back and looking at this, a business proposition, and I think you also bring up a good point, which is, we're solicited in this. When is the last time you can get a ticket on this boat? I don't, I didn't see anything here that said, "Take action by August 1." So again, for our discussion here, it seems to me, if we're kind of playing poker with our cards up a little bit, what's the rush to join this as we see other things develop? Maybe we can make a better decision. The other thing is, you, from what I read here, if you're the first one assigned or the last one assigned, I don't think it makes a difference in how you're approached in this. So it seems to me as long, I'd be sort of leaning towards, let's just keep this option on the table and see what else develops? I don't know that there's, is there a compelling reason for us to act on this right now?
I would say that we already, and to a certain degree, missed the boat. I think that this group of communities politically gathered together, signed on to this. And it's, the first time it's been before us, but they gathered on to this, signed on to it, and I think put the pressure on our elected Attorney General to pursue this. And so to a certain extent, I don't, I believe that we are committed to solving this issue in a holistic way. Fortunately, other communities didn't delay in signing on because I think that's what put the pressure on, to pursue this from our Attorney General's position. I wish he had done it sooner. I guess I just want to understand if they're mutually exclusive. If they're not mutually exclusive, if we can sign on to both, I'd say, why not sign on to anything that helps further bring attention to this and further puts pressure on people in more prominent positions to chase it? I mean, I think of Maury Healy's job and other Attorney Generals around the country, very similar to what happened in the 90s with big tobacco. And unfortunately, again, this has been an issue that's really been in our face for several years. I'm kind of surprised it took elected leaders at the state level as long as it has, but I would certainly credit this with helping compel some of those people to move a little bit more quickly. So--
And that's kind of like my concern about, you know, if we were to wait, we'll go along on the Attorney General path, you know, what happens the next election cycle, new Attorney General, maybe this is not a precedence for them and they, throughout this, by the wayside. At least in the class action suit, you know, I feel that this will move forward. I feel that this is, you know, there's a compelling enough case here that whether or not the same attorneys stay on the case or not, they're going to continue to move this forward because it's, because there's a reason to do so. And it's not a political reason.
It's financial.
Financial.
Which is just as powerful. Yeah, but New York's often getting contingent fee cases. I'm not sure I've been involved in one contingent fee case in 25 years. This is a little bit of an outlier. There was one around, there's been a couple, but they're, they're not as common, contingent fee cases. So the question is, is money the motivator?
It just so, it seems so comparable to the tobacco experience. Not exactly, but that feel of there needs to be momentum and is it going to be the state? Is it federal? Is it local? Who's going to drive that home?
Okay. I feel like we've, I feel like we've had a lot of discussion. Any final one-minute comments from anyone? Rosemary?
Nope.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to participate and a second to participate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
We will notify them.
We read.
Next item on our agenda is appointments. We have the appointment of Ron Fagan to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a full member, Michael Quinlan to the Board of Registars, Devon Smallock to the Sustainability Committee, and David Brown to the Stevens Estate Advisory Board.
So move all of them? If you would.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to thank all of them. And we're now in transition as Madam Chair and I sat on that Appointment Subcommittee now. Selectman Valancourt and I sit on that board. And again, it's really great to have people who have long history in this town and people who, we just met with somebody tonight who had moved into town less than a year ago, who's looking to join our board. So it's, we really appreciate people doing this here, to use your term. Selectman Valancourt, the backbone of the--
The glue that holds the community together. Or is that, was that, was that Tracy's? I think, yeah.
The town would come to a screeching halt.
Oh, right.
But very true and we appreciate it and thank you again. And we've got a lot of work to, boy, there are folks volunteering left and right. Keep coming.
All across the spectrum too, ages. It's great to see, you know, people who have been around the town for a long time wanting to step up and also for some of the younger folks that are really now interested in becoming part of the, of the volunteer boards on the town. So it's really great to see all the different folks. We interviewed two, two people tonight that were really well-qualified and really interested in becoming part of, of the town. So it's great to see that.
Can we just make note of the point of record that they have specific expiration dates in the record? The specific expiration dates will be those that are for those positions that you fill in?
Actually, they're all June 30th, 2021.
Right. They're all the same, just as a practice, just to make sure that--
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Just so we may note to the file.
Anyone else who's interested in serving on a committee? I think there, there's still, there's still openings and we've had some, you know, interest, a lot of interest lately I've seen come through, but just to reiterate that, so go to the website and see the openings. Now we can move on to governmental reports. I think first on our agenda under this section is an update from the Zoning Board. We have Mr. Koch with us. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board.
Goodie.
Hi.
Great to be here.
Thanks for coming. The other side of the table?
It's creepy over here. So are you looking for prepared remarks?
We would love to just have an update from you as to what you're focused on and--
Sure.
--how we might help you in any way if there's anything we can do.
I appreciate that. As far as a, you know, a report from the Board, I think that there are likely only a couple of things worth discussing at, at any length, frankly. I think as everybody knows, I'm, I'm new to the chair and although the world is different from this side of the bench, the world is also very different. I think everybody here knows, the world is different when you're holding the gavel as opposed to just being a member. So it's not necessarily, you know, a challenging transition, but since it's only once, once a month and I'm, you know, a volunteer and not putting, you know, extraordinarily daily time into it, it's just, it's going to be a, there's going to be a learning curve forming, which means that I don't have a lot of perspective from the chair. I can tell you, you know, a lot of things from, you know, sitting in the wings as a member or briefly an associate member. But as far as longitudinally, and I've been on the Board for, I think, six, six and a half years, but only chair for a couple of months. And the last month, I polled, you know, brought it up on the agenda, what do the members kind of have on their mind? You know, let me broker your questions. Let me broker your concerns. And I think the, the biggest question that came from the members of the Board is kind of is, where is the, you know, there's going to be a research, a reexamination and perhaps a rewrite, a larger rewrite of the zoning bylaws, which has kind of been discussed for a couple of years. I know that there was a kind of a topical, you know, rewrite, pick, pick a bunch of the low-hanging fruit and address them, which we're certainly grateful for that, that editorial approach. But the larger, the deeper dive, you know, broader scope kind of thing is, is a question. I think that many of the members are interested in learning what the status of, is it, is it something that is ongoing? Is it something that's bound, paused for a little while to find, find funding and/or time, that kind of thing? So that's probably my, my first question. As far as the second issue that I think is pretty meaningful to us is, you know, we've had some turnover this year, which I think all of you are aware of, and we are currently, you know, as of June, we're now a five-person Board, which puts us in a little bit of a pickle. You know, if anybody needs to, needs to miss a meeting, although we're only once a month, certainly people have, have conflicts that arise. And so five coming down to four would mean that every motion before us, every application would need to have a unanimous vote, which puts an awful lot of, I think, I think, pressure on, on the Board to be fully aligned. And what I, what I don't want to have happen is people go along to get along and we don't necessarily get the, the right votes, that we just get the votes that are needed to move things along and not upset the apple cart. So I think the, the second thing on my mind by and large is just, this is not to put pressure on the Board, but just to make you aware that sitting on a five-person Board is very different than sitting on the seven-person Board that we have absolutely enjoyed over the last several years because it gives us flexibility, you know, in attendance and folks filling in with the associate ranks. And probably as part B to that question is, at, at this point, since we're down to five, you know, my predilection is to say, you just need, we need to body anybody so that we can have a larger Board, have more flexibility. But if given a choice, you know, if we had the, if I'm sitting here and you're saying, hey, you've got the luxury of picking, you know, any kind of characteristics that you want, I would suggest to you that it's awfully helpful to have an architect sitting on the board. We've had, we had Doug for a number of years, and his perspective from a, a design standpoint, and being able to, you know, call shenanigans on another architect is, by and large, invaluable. In no way am I suggesting that architects grow on trees that are willing to submit letters to, to Mr. Mailer for appointment. But if one comes along, give him a good long look.
Not another attorney?
I don't think we, I don't think we need more than one, frankly.
When I was on the board, we had three.
Well, you're down with two, right?
So, just, I'd like to make a comment on your first question about the zoning laws, the zoning board, or the zoning law rewrites. I, I guess in my opinion, I wouldn't see like any kind of wholesale rewrite of the zoning regulations. But what I would suggest is, you know, your board was kind of having boots on the ground and, and seeing where there are issues in the zone. Because when I was on the zoning board, I remember, you know, there was, certain things always came up as an, or unenforceable in some ways, like, you know, our cell tower laws that were very difficult to enforce at the state level. Some of our sign-by laws were ambiguous and weren't clear. So, those are the ones that I think we always, you know, we would bring forward to, to the town meeting and say, you know, can we have a clarification or modify this? But I think as, as a board, you know, with your boots on the ground and knowing which ones seem to be always problematic, I would suggest that you bring those forward to, to us or to the planning board and suggest, you know, a modification be brought forward at town meeting so we can get those clarified. That would be my, I mean, because I think you guys have, you know, the most exposure to those zoning laws and know which ones seem to work and which ones seem to always be problematic, right? That would, that would be my comment. And then, and as far as the second one, I'll let these guys comment too on anything, but you know, what, like we said earlier, we have a number of applicants that have come forward, and some of them, you know, have expressed an interest in being in the zoning board, on the zoning board. So, sit tight, help us on the way.
Appreciate it.
And there were some good ones, too. You know, there were some that have some very good backgrounds. And I have been trying to solicit, actually, I talked to an architect graduate student the other day, and I said, when you finish school, he's at RPI right now, I said, when you finish this school, come back and make sure you talk to us. And I also know another one in town, another young man who is a, is a legacy member of the town, and I'll talk to him as well, but, yeah, I understand the, you know, the importance of an architect. I mean, I sat on the board with Joe LaGrasse for years, and Joe was just amazing to be on the board. He was a gift, you know, so I understand that. And when he left, I solicited Mike Laporta to come on the board, because he was an architect as well, and another person that could lend the perspective, so I understand that need.
Keep them coming, get out there, twist, twist some arms.
I had some architects hanging around the street corner, hey.
Come on.
Just as a reminder to the board, parallel with the master planning process is a zoning rewrite to align with the master planning process. So, I'd encourage something that should be happening anyway, is as that zoning evolves to align with the master plan, and we'll go through the public haring phase with the planning board on the master plan, the sort of next logical step is to align the zoning to make sure that the master plan hopefully becomes a reality. That's the goal, right? So, as part of that process, Mr. Kefory's office is working, the same consultants to modify or recommend modifications to the zoning bylaw to the planning board, so I would encourage, not encourage, I would say, I'm sure the board would agree, those rewrites, those modifications, as they become available, should be provided to the zoning boards, they can provide their input as well. So, as the planning board goes through that, and ultimately, it ends up at town meeting with pretty significant changes to the zoning board. You folks can have a weigh-in on that and comment on that at your public meetings, and therefore impact what happens on the zoning bylaw.
That'd be extraordinarily helpful, I think. From, from our side of the, from our side of the, the table, I, from the zoning board side of the table, and perhaps the planning board shares this, one of the items that I think is, is, it's a bigger rewrite, I'm not necessarily sure that it dovetails extraordinarily well with the master plan, but I know something that would help the applicants is for some greater power than I, frankly, to manage the, the number of concurrent jurisdictions that the planning board has and the zoning board has, because we end up in this circle of, you've got to go here before you go there, but you can't go there until you go here, and it's frustrating for the applicants. My approach has been, if there's an application in front of me, I'm, I'm not going to wait for the, for the, for the planning board to take action, which is, again, that's my approach. I won't necessarily be chair forever, and I may not necessarily be, I get hit by a bus tomorrow. But so, my suggestion is that in, in there somehow, Mr. Mailer and members of the board, addressing concurrent jurisdiction in a thoughtful and complete way, because I think we all have acknowledged that one of the reasons that a rewrite, or certainly a deeper dive into writing anyway, makes sense is because even, no matter how you start legislation, however well-intentioned or well-drafted it is, it goes through committees, it goes through amendments, it goes through changes, and then, you know, the, the sausage grinder comes out to something at the end that's just, at times, incomprehensible. Ran up against one of those, you know, this week for our August meeting, which Suzanne was very gracious in helping to sort out. But it's those, those kind of things that I, I don't necessarily have my, my thumb on all of them, so I wouldn't be able to identify them thoughtfully, frankly, and, and would find it extraordinarily challenging without the, the time that the professionals in, in the departments or the consultants would be able to, to put into these. To them, I love legislative drafting, do not misunderstand me. If I had, if I had the, the time and energy, I would, I would embrace this project, you know, myself. I just, I just don't fortunately have the, the horsepower.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, just, oh, I'm sorry. So, so as you look at those things, you say that's seen to be process-oriented, any of that tie into the, what we're doing in terms of online with getting permits and forms? And that's, I mean, is there any?
I think the integration is, we have a technical review committee, and so, part of the reason we provide that to any prospective builder, business owner, is to put all the people around the table to, to sort of sort that out. One of the byproducts of that should be this sort of quasi-logical and linear path through the land use process. Having sat in some of those meetings, that can be a little complicated. So, I think it's more, it is more of an internal function to make sure that not only just the zoning bylaw, that we're communicating with prospective businesses and builders so that they understand, next you go here, and next you're here. So, I think the TRC process has been very effective, because it saves time and therefore money with both developers and business owners, but it's a good reminder to us to, as part of that, we should be saying, your first stop's here, or concurrent, what those concurrent steps are. So, we can certainly work to improve that. It's, it's good feedback.
Okay.
So, I see that as sort of logistics and operations rather than the zoning bylaws itself, probably?
I, I imagine that you're right, that there's a level of interpretation that can, that can direct the, the boards into one or the other. I hear you loud and clear on that. And then, there's the point at which somebody actually has to read it, figure that out. Of course, there's certainly technical help in, in the, in the building. I guess what I, what I would love to do is just be able to have the, the code be, we're not going to get to crystal clear, just to get clear so that we can all fall back onto the, the same bed of regulation.
Rosemary, any questions? All right, good. We have, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks for taking the time.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Next, we have sidewalk connectivity plan.
So, Madam Chairman, as part of the strategic goal set by the board last September, believe it or not, it's been almost a year, 10 months, we'll be doing that again probably in September, the board asked that as part of the macro level, the sort of pro-North Andover agenda goals, one of the major goals in that component was developing a plan to improve and add sidewalks. We're referring to is the sidewalk connectivity improvement plan. With that, under the sort of direction of the board, I've asked the two folks in front of you to spearhead that project, which will take a bit of time, but ultimately, and they'll talk a little bit about the upcoming steps, I apologize, we're, as part of our Wi-Fi reset, I'm not sure we're going to be able to put this up on the screen, but I can give you a copy. Do you have the hide copy? Because I can give you the electronic.
Yeah.
And so, I'll let them introduce themselves. And this is the team that I've asked to spearhead this project moving forward, and here to answer some questions and give you some sense of how we're going to proceed over the next 12 months or so.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Burdaisy, the town engineer, and this is Monica Gorgoir, the staff planner. And as Town Manager indicated, we're here to discuss the development of a sidewalk connectivity improvement plan. Based on feedback from residents and a strategic plan goal set by the Board of Selectmen, the Town Manager has created a connectivity working group who will evaluate connectivity issues and develop a sidewalk connectivity improvement plan, abbreviated SCIP, for the town of North Andover. Monica and I have been identified as the leads for this connectivity working group. Although, it's, it's on the slide, it may be difficult to see, but we did put in the presentation map, which is an existing, a map of the existing sidewalks we currently have that was identified as part of the pavement management program survey performed approximately eight years ago. This map is currently being updated as part of the grant application with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and this map will serve as our base map for the development of the improvement plan. The primary roles of the connectivity working group are to develop a comprehensive plan in accordance with the town master plan and incorporating public feedback for maintaining and expanding the sidewalk connections. Will also be to review and summarize and estimate the costs of the SCIP and forward the priority requests related to connectivity to the Town Manager for incorporation into the capital improvement plan. And lastly, the connectivity working group will oversee the implementation, reevaluation, update, and revision to the long-term sidewalk improvement plan as necessary for the future. I'm actually going to turn it over to Monica now, who will discuss the connectivity working group, scope of activities.
Excellent. The connectivity working group will have the responsibility of evaluating and incorporating existing internal data. Currently, we have a database of GIS, and we'll be looking specifically at the existing sidewalk inventory. We'll be looking at the inventory of existing trails as well as proposed trails. As John mentioned, we will also be looking at data provided as part of the sidewalk inventory. Currently, there's side, is field bar taking place in the town. It started back last month in June, and we have interns from the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission who are out looking at the current sidewalks, are looking at conditions, things of that nature. Also, public input will be very important, so we can look at various ways of collecting data such as surveys, public meetings, just other methods there. Also, a vital output will be the developing, development of a sidewalk improvement plan. That plan will include costs, and there'll be cost of materials for expanding the sidewalks. It'll also, can also cover things such as treatments, such as trees, benches, lighting, just the number of things that can happen as you expand your, your sidewalks. We'll also be setting, working to set a prioritization, which will based on, be based on the public input. And again, that involves costs and the impact. And finally, the connectivity working group will be presenting a plan to the Board of Selectmen for the final improvement. We'll want stakeholders from the community to participate in this group, and we're looking for individuals that are interested in improving access, and that would be access to civic, civic functions, buildings, open space, educational places, transit. We'll be also looking for individuals interested in improving access to, to business centers and supporting economic, economic development. We want individuals who are interested in improving public safety, and also equity is important, so we want to improve access for all people regardless of income, abilities, and ages. They need to be able to move from one place to another. And then, I'll turn this over for our, our final slide on next steps.
Well, I appreciate that. We can keep this, moving this along. Again, the goal is, if you think about this as a component, very much like the facility master plan developed back in 2010, which ultimately ended up in capital improvement plan and became the sort of living document that resulted in the seven very successful projects that we've had, this is the same kind of thing. The challenge will be, once we develop this plan and set the cost out the plan, it'll be very exciting. But the goal then will be, how much can we afford on an annual basis? Currently, we're only spending about $75,000 towards sidewalks. We spend somewhere in the $21.2 million a year in roadway improvements, so we spend a fairly significant amount of dollars in roadway improvements and have spent less so on the sidewalk area. So, as a goal of the Board of Selectmen, and really, what we heard back from the master planning process, which was, if you look at the data that came back, sidewalks was up there in almost every category, our goal with these folks' help is to develop that kind of long-range plan that the board would adopt, sort of like the street plan, where you can look in the capital improvement plan and look over the next five years, figure out which streets are going to be paved and what the nature of the work is. This would be the same thing. We'd be able to say, these sidewalks are going to be installed or maintained. This is a stretch, here's how many linear feet, here are the road, here are the streets that they're going to be on, and develop a similar plan that'll be integrated into the capital improvement plan. So, the challenge out of my office is to take this really exciting plan, that ultimately you'll say this is really great, and figure out how to break that down into affordable components. But we certainly would expect that the annual investment in sidewalks will be increased by, you know, four to tenfold so that we can side-implement this plan. We should set reasonable expectations. We have a lot of places you're probably going to expect sidewalks, and a lot of places you're probably going to expect improvements to sidewalks, but not unlike the roadway plan, which we spend a fair amount of money on, we don't get to every roadway in five years. So, I say to folks, 25 to 30 years is more like it. That's the same thing here. We could not afford to connect the entire community, even within 20 years. But we have to start, and we have to prioritize where we want to place sidewalks, and this plan's going to help us prioritize those things, and then, we'll increase our investment to make it a reality over time.
May I ask a question? Something that we talked about just last week or so. So, there are different types of sidewalks in towns. Some are made with concrete, some are made with autov, some are that gravel that, in the parks that... So, I guess I would ask that you would try to work with, I mean, some of these areas are historical, that we try to put back what was there before, or what would be appropriate for that district in particular, whether also including the berms and the granite curbing and things like that, that they're, you know, granite curbing also, I know it's more expensive, but it lasts a very long time, and it's also something of a safety issue. It's really a pretty good barrier for a car that goes amiss. So, to me, that is sort of an important thing. It's actually come up with some of the neighbors saying, gee, you know, this is concrete, and they're going to patch it with, you know, and I know sometimes that has to be that way, but I think we really need to be sensitive to what looks good in the neighborhood and matches the historical character of it as well.
So, I assume material would be part of the inventory in the plan, what material the sidewalk would be?
Well, not just the inventory, the material we are driving for, so how many roads you cover. If it's granite and concrete, you're probably covering somewhere about one-tenth or one-eighth of the project distances that you would cover if it's berm and it's a mess. So, those are the kinds of choices we'll come back to, and maybe it's neighborhood-specific or, meaning historic neighborhood versus whatever, but those are the kinds of decisions ultimately that'll come back to you in terms of trying to, probably not road by road, but , but area and general direction, because it'll drive cost dramatically.
Will you come back to us also with some more sense of how you will prioritize? Because I think we would have input on, you know, the weighting of how we're prioritizing. Are we prioritizing higher volume, you know, density, or schools, or what?
Schools work out, schools like...
Right. I mean, I'm just thinking, maybe we would all have different ideas as to what's the priority here, so I just want to make sure there's some...
Right. One of the priorities could be that some sidewalks have been in total disrepair for literally decades, and I'm not, and are in some neighborhoods where the children really all do walk to school. So, it's between deciding that or expanding an area. Yeah, so it's a lot of...
That's what I was thinking.
You, let me, let me say, advance the draft product would say that the obvious, but it sounds already like it's going to be more obvious. There's going to be a lot of difficult choices here that when you, if we, we could, like any community, we, I think we, our infrastructure is generally good, given the rankings we have from our consultants, but if we were to literally just focus on maintenance, we could probably spend a half or three-quarters of a million dollars on maintaining sidewalks each for the next 10 years and never add a new one. So, as you decide on the choices, like, do we want to do, I think Mr. Valencourt's reference is a very good one, and that's, I, hinting is the likely direction of things. If you work off the sort of epicenter of the school projects, we happen to have most of our schools in a general area, and when you add it to the Mass Dot project, which is adding significant roadway, and the Safe Roots to School project, which added significant sidewalks, it'd be logical to imagine sort of a spider wave of connectivity going from there, and then the middle school project and all those things outward. That's logical, and you should probably see that, but there still will be choices around maintenance versus new, and I would not see those as mutually exclusive, or you won't accomplish your additional connectivity goals. It'll have to be a balance, so much to it maintenance and so much to it new, because without that, we just wouldn't be getting to the new, and there'd be disappointment around the connectivity. So, it's a little bit of a... It'll be challenging, but exciting.
Thank you for being here today. As we all know, it's a great town. So, as we all know, it's a great town, and people, you know, it doesn't take long to go out around and see so many people are walking and enjoying the town, and sidewalks are a critical component of that, and keeping people safe as they walk. Some streets that are just, you know, not going to be conducive to sidewalks, but there's a lot out there that we want to look at, and people really do love walking around this town, and again, getting these kids safely to school and walking to school. So yeah, so it's a very important project, so thank you.
And there's a lot of landmass. We are a big community, and we have a lot of roads, so...
I think you can just see when you add sidewalks to a neighborhood, the change in people who live in that neighborhood and people in adjacent neighborhoods, how they treat them, in a good way. The best example is Rosemary's neighborhood with the addition of the green street sidewalks. And I know that that was through a grant, but, so I'm excited that we're taking this step. I think that it's going to improve how people feel about our town, which is already pretty good.
Rosemary, any other comments?
Only one quick suggestion in terms of, as you're talking to folks and getting your input. We have a number of committees that you may want to get in contact with. I'm thinking about sustainability and so forth, that youth who could bring some perspective that might inform some of this, because you're talking about schools, but you know what? Youth center, and so I think those groups may add a little more perspective. That might help.
I second that. Being on the subappointment committee, we got, had lots of conversations with folks on committees, and the clearest thing that jumped out was the interconnectivity or overlap in little areas with a lot of what the different committees do. So I would highly recommend getting in touch with the various, reviewing the list of committees and just thinking, you know, does it make sense to reach out to them and have a liaison? Historical committee, in fact, for your point would be another one. But I'm thrilled to see this, so thank you very much. I'm so excited. This was one of my, my big hot buttons, so I'm really excited to have this plan.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along, we are at the Town Manager's Report. I'll turn it to you. The introduction of...
Great. So I would like, we've been having some conversations with folks from Trinity Financial. Trinity Financial is a consultant working for the owners of Royal Crest, which is Aimco. Trinity is of local concern involved in real estate development, has tremendous amount of experience with real estate development and construction. They brought on, so they're hired by Aimco to look at Royal Crest to come up with a sort of plan, and let them talk about that. I'd like to introduce Jim Keefe, who's a principal for the firm. You can introduce Eva and other folks here and talk a little bit about what they're going to be doing.
Thank you, Andrew and Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much for giving us a few minutes to introduce ourselves. Again, my name is Jim Keefe, and I'm a principal at Trinity Financial in Boston, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Eva Ehrlich, who's a vice president at Trinity, and Aaron Holmes, who's also in the Development Department of Trinity, and they are the core of the team at Trinity that's going to be overseeing this process. It's probably no secret to anybody here that the 50-year-old Royal Crest Estates needs a little love, needs a little attention. It was a beautiful place when it was first built, but obviously over a 50-year period, it's developed, obviously, capital needs that need attention. We've been retained by Aimco, we've done work with them before, to take a hard look, comprehensive overview of what's going on there physically, what needs to happen to return it to as a state-of-the-art residential facility, and look at maybe other possible opportunities that could occur there in the context of the town's master planning process and the master planning process that we undertake. The, you know, I'm here tonight basically to say that this can be as transparent a process as possible. We'll be, you know, making ourselves available for questions to various stakeholders, certainly the board, the planning department, the community development department. Eric has been very helpful in terms of giving us a good start in understanding some of the history. We've also established communication with Merrimack College. Obviously, they have a keen interest in the site as well. So again, we're just here tonight to introduce ourselves. I know it's been a long night, but to get a sense from some of you folks if you have any initial thoughts you want to share with us. But we plan on getting about the business of this very seriously the next, it's actually started now, but it's really just beginning to pick up some momentum, and hopefully the next time I come back, I'll have a lot more detail to share in terms of where that process is going.
James, you could just add for the board's benefit, the type of subconsultants you're working with, the specific disciplines that you're bringing to the table?
We've really got the whole range from, you know, capital needs assessors, people actually go in and look and see, you know, what's going on, what needs to be fixed, what are some of the things that need to be brought into code compliance. There's a fairly significant water issue going on at the site that seems to be getting worse over the years than better, despite a lot of attempts to deal with that. So we've got people that are looking at that specific issue. Traffic engineers, we've hired a master planning firm to take a look at some of what some of the alternatives might be. But we don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves in terms of our master planning process until we've really taken a hard look at some of the underlying issues that are going on, the due diligence that's going to be necessary. And I forgot to mention, we obviously have 588 residents here, and we want to make sure that they are kept informed. We are going, you know, a lot of consultants going out there, interacting with, you know, just people who live there, but by and large focusing their efforts on the empty apartments, so we're not going to be too disruptive. I'm kind of optimistic, the brief period I've spent in North Andover, it's a great community, and I'm really kind of confident that we're going to come up with something that's going to be really great. I just can't tell you what that is yet.
Well, I got to tell you, Jim, from somebody who lives around the corner from that, one, I can definitely say, yes, there's something helping with the groundwater. It has changed in the past 10 years, and that's ongoing. Two, the word that comes to mind is potential when I look at that, given its location, proximity to Merrimack College, major thoroughfare for our community. It just screams more could happen with vision. And so I'm excited, but I would also challenge you in that this is a, you know, you don't get a lot of opportunities like this either to make it right. And I think one of the things that we've proven in this town, particularly in the past five, six years, is when there's a good process to evaluation, getting information in, the product that comes out is tremendous. And so if you follow through as you, as you've lain out here, and I have full expectation, of course, it will, we really could have something spectacular, because it does beg for that to come.
It does. I agree with you. It's really, it's 88 acres, so it's a lot of land. It's, you know, significantly underutilized. There's a, you know, it's really quite challenging in terms of figuring out where to begin, but I think we've assembled a great team to come up with something very exciting, one way or the other, and I really look forward to presenting that at some point.
Thank you.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing it as well, and I think, you know, the way the property is now, you're right, it's been, you know, at one time it was like, you know, it was a shining star of the area, and it has, over years, we all, you know, get a little dust on the old, you know, the fender and stuff, so you're going to clean that up.
50 years is young in my book.
Yeah, me too. But I think, you know, I'd like to see the product when it's the final product, and I hope, you know, you have some considerations to security. I think, you know, we have a lot of, you know, we may be very good to talk to members of our police department and what they currently experience up there.
Unfortunately, it's pretty well-known by several of your departments.
Yeah.
That's hopefully something we will definitely fix.
And the college students, I know right now, I believe they're intermixed with a lot of residents and families in there, and I know that's problematic to some of the...
For everybody.
And I don't begrudge the college students, they're doing what college students do. You know, they're there for a college experience, but families that live next door to them are not there for a college experience. So, you know, I hope that your plan addresses some of that, too, and how the management of the college experience there.
We do.
I hope you walk away from this just seeing the eagerness from this board.
I'm sorry.
I hope you walk away from this seeing the eagerness from this board to support you, any effort that you pursue to make that corridor more appealing. I would even think of our state legislative delegation, and we've been in the past more than willing to work as partners, and so I just hope that that's the message you leave here with, that we want to be partners with you, whatever we can do to help.
Great. Thank you.
Help you make that better because of where it is and the incredible potential that exists there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Rosemary, do you have anything to...
The only thing I was commenting, that it is, and I'm sure you're studying this, it is a bit of a traffic nightmare on occasion, so the only thing, whatever the plan encompasses that they would, you would take that into consideration for...
Traffic's going to be a big driver here.
Yeah, I would think.
We are aware that MassDOT is well on its way towards trying to figure that out. We would like to kind of fast-forward our process to make sure that whatever they're doing is going to be sympathetic to what we might want to do. But traffic is, it always comes down to traffic.
It does. It's just the shape of our town that if they, if commuters aren't getting through at a quick enough pace, they're going to start going on some of our other roads like Salem Street and Johnson Street. It's a, it's kind of, it can be a real bottleneck from, you know, people just getting into the city or whatever, or getting onto the other highways, so... But I'm sure, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, so that's it.
I would just echo what all of my colleagues have said. I think there's so much potential there. I'm so excited to have you here and hear that you're doing this work, because I think that that could be so much more than it is. I know, since I've been on the board, I've been talking to our town manager about this space and my feelings that we could do more, especially given it being right next to the college, to, I think he's coined the term now, campus edge feel, like there's, I think so much potential to be leveraged being right next to the college to make that more than it is. So I very much look forward to seeing what your proposal will have. Did you give us a sense I may have missed the timeline of your engagement?
Well, we're kind of working around when Eva's going to have the baby.
Congratulations.
You know, actually, and I've been watching her, thinking, this little lady needs to go home and have a baby.
Not to mention, we didn't have supper tonight. Is there a place that's still open that we can get some food on before we go home? It's remarkable. You know, I think we're going to have a pretty good sense in about 30 to 60 days. What do you think, Eva?
Wonderful. Well, we, I will make myself available in any capacity needed to, if you, you know, need help or support or whatever, and I'm sure my colleagues will get themselves available as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. We welcome feedback from the board. We're pretty accessible. Again, Andrew and Eric have been terrific in terms of making themselves accessible, but this is going to be a great open process, and hopefully we're going to get to a very good place.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just some, just some final comments. You should know that timing for everybody here, timing could not be better. So the state is proposing $16, $17 million of investment in the 114 corridor with Royal Crest sitting in the center of that. It's an opportunity to affect that, to make sure that whatever happens there is included in a plan. If we were applying for a MassWorks grant, even on some development of 80 acres and 500, it's 588 units. Some residents don't realize that. It's 588 residents, it's 588 residential units. It's our largest residential unit complex on 80 acres. We would never get a return from the Commonwealth of $16 million to do infrastructure improvements. So the fact that it's timed with the MassDOT proposal is ideal. The college is eager and has been part of the conversations with Jim and his team. They want to be a partner to the discussion here. So the zoning changes we're talking about, we can influence the zoning on the master plan in conjunction with this project. The stars could not be better aligned, and I think you've heard this from the board, but I'll echo what I know Jim and Eva have heard from Eric and I, which is, this is the time, this is a great opportunity, and we should seize that opportunity. It's appreciated.
Again, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
From that, Madam Chairman, we, we once again receive the GFOA certificate of achievement and excellent in financial reporting, something we've now got five or six years in a row, as you see our trophy case up front, plaque case anyway. It's a recognition of the work of Lynn Savage and others in the organization that they produce such a wonderful report and get recognized nationally. So I want to give credit to Lynn and her team for, once again, meeting the sort of gold standard on auditing. This is part of the audit report, it's called a cap. And once again, give her credit for meeting that important standard.
Great. Give her our thank you, and congratulations. Okay, reports. Anyone have questions on the reports? I have one.
Yes.
On the overdose report.
Yes.
I, I like the graphs where we can see trends, and I was just looking at the number of calls. The graphs really that you provide now are on overdoses, but not necessarily calls, right? I just wanted to clarify, because it's, right, it's not the calls. The calls are much more substantial, right? And then...
Yes.
If there's an overdose, it's on the graph. But if, if there was a call and maybe we went and administered Narcan or whatever...
Well, that would be an overdose call.
That would be an overdose call.
Yes.
But the call isn't on the graph. So when we see a graph of 11 overdoses this year, that's not, there were more than 11 calls. That's just 11 overdoses.
There were a lot more than 11 calls by the fire department.
No, I meant opioid-related calls, sorry.
Yeah, I'd have to check on how they nuance the report.
So typically, you call, if someone, if someone needs to be treated, if there's been, what you're trying to distinguish is if there are calls where the person is exhibiting symptoms of having taken drugs but not overdosed?
Well, in every call, I guess I was just making sure I understood the report I was looking at.
Sure, yeah, that's fine.
And I was questioning, you know, are we, are we capturing the full extent of, and also related to our, thinking about a lawsuit, and how much time we spend on opioid cases? So that's was the genesis of my looking into this deeper. So I'm wondering, you know, are we taking a huge amount of calls and directing these, the callers to some support service or other thing, or is every call that we receive, we go give Narcan and we revive a person, or just, I'm trying to understand, I guess, more the full scope of work associated with this crisis, and I wasn't sure this report was giving me the full scope.
So are you concerned about even double counting, or so, so they only count on ones with Narcan?
The question is, are there other services we're providing other than to respond and give medical treatment to someone who is in an overdose? We do not do any, we do not do counseling through 911 as an example, or the calls here would be calls placed to 911, that there is a person who is likely in an overdose circumstance or be impacted by being on opiates.
Okay.
Right? And not as much sort of caregiving in a sense that someone we know is someone is a regular opioid user, here's the, here's a contact person for dealing with treatment. So I will double-check to answer your question, it's a fair question. I think what you're seeing, are the calls associated with opiate-related calls that typically come into 911 because there is an overdose, not just an information point, like, we know so-and-so is a regular user of the drug. The calls come into 911 because there has been an overdose, and therefore it's a 911 call we respond.
Okay, so let me clarify my disconnect.
Sure.
On the first page of the, or, sorry, not the eighth page of the report, there's a total for the period starting January 1st, 2014 till now. There's a number of calls, then there's a number of Narcan administrations by different groups, and then a number of cardiac arrests and DOA and et cetera.
Yep.
The sub-numbers don't sub to 110, which is the total number of calls.
Correct.
So there's something else that's happening, and I guess that's what my question is. What is the other thing that's happening?
Yes. So some, but see, if you realize the total call is for opiate overdoses for the ranging period, this is the total amount of opiate overdoses since '14, 110. There's just not a sub-component.
And we gave 56 of those people Narcan from the fire department, and 14 of them from the police department, and so on. But, so, 6 plus 56 plus 14 plus 9 plus 2, that's not 110, so that's what I'm asking.
The delta is folks who did not require Narcan.
Okay.
Who we responded to, but did not require Narcan as a response, may not have been in cardiac arrest. So you could have a Narcan cardiac arrest, you could have a double count here.
Right.
Right? And so, but I will, I will look at the report for the purpose of saying total calls and breaking them into pieces.
And again, it was more just for me to understand a little bit more about what I'm, what I'm looking at each month and making sure I'm getting a holistic picture of the toll on our, you know, what, what we're doing in this area, basically.
Yep. We will take the total, and I think this is helpful... We will take the total, and I think this is helpful, although I think taking out the total calls here and looking at the individual pieces is helpful, but we should have a piece of this that says total calls and what we did by component to total calls.
Yeah.
That's a fair point.
That might make sense.
And have our thing check, you know, did not, did give Narcan or...
Well, that's, in this, it just doesn't total back to the total.
Right.
Because there's another category, Narcan.
Yeah. And honestly, if we could have this by year, because to see this from 2014, I mean, I went back, you know, when I was preparing for the meeting and looked at what the previous reports were so that I could get a sense over time, but I would rather not have to do that. I would rather just have a graph that shows me a sense over time, you know, where we've been, you know, tripled our use of Narcan in the last, you know, three months, or we haven't. We've, we're using it, you know, whatever the case. I'm just trying to get, whenever I look at these reports personally, I'm trying to get a sense of trends, what's changing in our community.
Right.
And what, you know...
Year to year.
Yeah, year to year.
But just for the sake of sort of everybody, not specific to your questions, there is a, the slide that identifies opiate overdose statistics does total back to the total of the report. So by year, our opiate overdose responses, right through 911, they were 15 in 2014. They went to 25, then to 34, back to 27, and are tracking lower again this year. So generally, if you average that, the average has been relatively stable.
Right.
The question is, the responses to those, the DOAs as a result of that have been, because the detail is provided below for each call, have been stable. The balance between male and female age group and in-town or out-of-town have remained relatively stable.
Right.
And so I'll check to see if there's data around here that's, that closes the gap of coming back to the 110 to see if there's been any trend and create a graph or data that allows you to see that year over year. I think from speaking to the folks and evaluating the data, it has been relatively stable or declining slightly over the last two years. Overall response...
That's what I've gotten anecdotally from my conversations as well, but I just wanted to understand that.
See it. Understood.
And I mean, the reason I was asking about the Narcan specifically is because when I was thinking about the court case and what our costs might be associated with this, that was one cost that came to mind. And so I went to look, oh, how much are we spending on Narcan? I can't tell from this report how much, when, you know, if we're increasing our use of it or not.
Yep.
Just to explain a bit my thought process.
Sure. Absolutely. Yes. More than half of it provided.
I have one other thing on the reports. Oh, I just wanted to share with my colleagues, I think that they've heard me say this before, but just to, like, in bits and pieces. In the managers' report section, I had asked Andrew if he would pursue giving us an update of progress to goals from the various departments rather than necessarily numbers for things. Not these things, is police and fire and overdose, I think we need the numbers, but for some of the other things, like the library report or the senior center report, some of those numbers, when I look at them, I don't know what I'm supposed to make of these numbers, that X number of books have been checked out or whatever. So just to explain why they're missing there now is because I suggested, I think it would be very helpful to have a list of the goals at the beginning of the fiscal year that the department has set. So they want to do these 10 things. And could we have some regular, you know, report on the progress towards those goals in this section as opposed to numbers that we may or may not know what they mean? Because at least if the stated goal is, you know, to increase circulation of nonfiction books, then we would know to look at that number. But, you know, without knowing the goal, it's kind of... So I just wanted to explain why those reports are not there. And we discussed doing that at the beginning of the fiscal year because obviously, their goals are going to be set for the beginning of the fiscal year, so...
So in response to that, what I said, so that the board knows, is that we have created a goals database. Every goal for every department that is in the budget is in a database. All departments are asked to review those goals. We're starting, started a little bit as a pilot at the end of last fiscal year, starting in earnest beginning this year. It'll take a little bit. Every particular goal is in a database. All of those goals are listed by the departments. All departments are required to update the goals, the date that the goal was supposed to be completed, what the goal was, whether or not they're on time, whether or not they're not on time. And so what I would imagine as, it'll take us a few months to sort of really get moving with that. What I expect is probably a quarterly report that says, here's every department's goal, here where they stand on goals. They're on track with the, they have five goals, they're on track with the goal, they're behind the goal. And so you'll see what the departments are accomplishing based on the goals that were approved as part of the budget. So we do have a database. We're working on that. Departments have been trained on it, but it's going to take us a little bit to sort of make sure that we're reporting it as you like.
That's right. And I guess the final point on that was my thinking, and this gets back to why earlier in the agenda, I was talking about trying to make room for maybe other intermediary conversation in our meetings, is because I'm hoping when we're looking at those goals, we're getting more insight as to what the different departments are doing. And maybe we would, you know, have those departments come to talk about their goal with more frequency, you know, if we, if they've achieved something or if we have input on a particular area, whatever, we would talk about those in our meetings. So just to explain, I guess, full circle, my, you know, what my thinking is.
That makes sense. I mean, help us understand what goal, why those are the goals and how they're important, and how do they translate, how we can support, what their challenges are. I think that makes, makes a lot of sense, so, yeah.
So remember, every item in the strategic planning document gets translated to, so those are macro level. They get translated into sort of mid-level strategic planning goals, which can translate it into individual current fiscal year goals, like forming a committee to look at sidewalk connectivity. So we keep in place, the sidewalk connectivity will be an overarching goal to selectmen for perpetuity, I think.
Yeah.
And then we drive those down into what this year's the plan, next year may be two miles of sidewalk. And so those individual goals in the budget book, which are in a database, which you'll see, drive back to the middle-level strategic goals and ultimately drive back to the macro sort of pro-north end of our upper-level goals that you guys agree to typically in September every year. It's all sort of connected.
Okay. So the next section on the agenda is selectmen's updates and comments.
I'm sorry, can I add one more item that was on there?
Yes, you may.
I apologize.
No problem.
Maybe because I'm just looking forward to the next section. I never reported yet, but will be reporting the overall responses to the survey regarding electricity.
Oh, yes.
We got a larger survey response of any of the two surveys we've ever issued.
Any of the two?
There were, I think we've done two. There were 764 responses to our survey. And I will give, at an upper level, those responses. By the way, we have an intern, a very, very accomplished intern, who'll be attending the Kennedy School in the fall, is working on a 30 or 40-page report about our power outages, which will be released to the public, obviously, to the board and the public. It's a very interesting document about, starts at the history of electricity all the way through our particular experiences.
Wow.
Incorporates this and talks about changes. Pretty close to that. But with that, I'll give you the upper-level response to the questions. 99.2% of all residents have experienced at least one power outage in the last 12 months. Of that group, 53.8% experienced between three and four power outages. Seven, excuse me, I got the math upside down. 19% experienced at least five or six outages. And a little, but just north of 5% experienced seven-plus outages during the last 12-month period.
Wow.
As relates to duration, 67.8%, more than 2/3 of the community, remember, all the community has suffered a power outage. 2/3 of the 764 people responded indicated that that outage was 12 hours or longer. So 2/3 of, 99% of the community in essence, has said that those outages have lasted at least 12 hours, which is a long outage, right? Pretty interesting stuff. Where do they receive the information? It jumps all over the place. They do still look at National Grid as an information source, but equally, sort of at 81%, but up, but 8% of these can overlap. 55% use social media, we're finding that, as I know from myself, as an increasing source of information. Another 30% find from friends and family after communicating through social media. So when you combine friends and family and social media, more than 85% of the community is getting their information by social media or communicating with their friends, probably getting the information on social media. Equal or more than what they're getting from National Grid, interesting enough. During a power outage, how would you rate access to regular and accurate information? As you can probably imagine, the vast majority of folks, we ranked it from 1 to 5. 5 is really great, and 1 was really poor. Those folks who rated that as a 5 was only 5%. Those who rated the middle was close to 40%, as you can certainly imagine. Two final questions. One was the reliability of electrical service. On average, again, those folks who rated a 5, which is positive, was about 6%. And those who rated a 1, which was poor, was about 12%. And like most bell curves, most of everybody was somewhere sort of in the middle of that. And ultimately, we asked them if they knew about all the resources that National Grid offered in terms of ways to communicate and understand what's going on. And generally, it was an average response if they felt like they were, a lot of folks picked up their information through telephone. There's still 64% calling National Grid when there's an outage, which is sort of a surprising number, we thought. And then the website is about equal at 64% as well. So folks, a fair amount of people are still using the phone. And finally, where are where the National Grid is investing in for its infrastructure? Some of it's, many of it's not specific to North Andover, but they are spending a fair amount of money. We asked folks if they're aware of that investment in infrastructure, and 0.4% said that they were aware. So we think there's an indication, we're going to provide this data to National Grid amongst other things. We think they could be a better job of communicating to make sure that the people know that they're, they're not, you know, they are doing work on infrastructure, that just, it's not resonating through the customer base. So I figured I'd give you that as an update on the surveys.
Interesting.
That's very good.
Okay, thank you. Anything else or any other questions for Andrew? All right, so selectmen's updates. This is a portion.
She changed the order.
I changed the order.
You really put you off.
I really put you off your game. I will entertain a public comment. I will indulge you for a public comment. Yes, Stan.
Respectfully, while I applaud your reorganization of the agenda, I would respectfully request that you return public comment to the end of the meeting, just so that if those of us who want to weather the storm here, make it all the way through, we get a chance to put our two cents in at the end. Just saying, something for your consideration, Madam Chair. I leave it to you. I just wanted to say, I have two comments. First is, I think it was interesting to me tonight to hear perfect examples of our town sort of using data-driven decision-making. I think that's a wonderful thing. And I think our town manager has led us down this wonderful path of planning the work and working the plan, and we saw another example of that tonight. And it has certainly stood us in good stead. And I also applaud you all, you know, getting into the quantitative way of looking at our community and trying to make it better. So I think that's all the good thing. But the other comment I wanted to make was I was really taken aback today when I saw the announcement for the replacement for our assistant town manager. And I had to, I had to think to myself, and that's why it would be a real impact on me, I have very few meetings left to harass our assistant town manager, so I have to make best use of all of these to really...
I thought I needed to wake you up during the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'm worried about, I'm worried about our assistant town manager getting what the, in the Department of Defense, in the military world, they call Figma. I won't tell you what that exactly means, but it mostly means, forget it, got my orders. When people are already working into the transition and they know they're leaving, so they don't care so much, they start to wind down. And I'm just concerned that we need to make sure that Mr. Santilli stays motivated right up to the bitter end. He's got work to do here. We've got to finish a kindergarten, there's things we got to do here. So I just wanted to offer my services to continue to motivate our assistant town manager.
No senior slide for the assistant town manager.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want that to be happening.
It's a free service.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
I just wanted to, I wanted to throw that in as an opportunity. Thank you very much.
Okay, so back to selectmen's comments. This is, I guess, the final two minutes for each person to kind of say what their, whatever announcement or thing they want to say. And this is where I would take your suggestions for next meeting agenda, if you have something you want us to discuss or what have you as well. Obviously, you can call me, but anyway.
My only comments or updates was I think, you know, I hope people in the town are getting out and enjoying some of the activities that we have to offer in North Andover. I think we're in such a great place, and I've talked to so many people about all the various outdoor activities that we have going on during the summer and in the fall. I mean, we have, you know, we started with sheep sharing, and we go into the Fourth of July, and we've got, you know, our great farmer's market going on every Sunday, and now we've got artisans market, and we've got National Night Outcoming. We've got the free fitness series on the Carmen three times a week.